I call this meeting to order. Can you please stand Mr. Don Bell, the Eagle Ford Church of Christ, become with his prayer, please?
Our holy Father, who is your creation, who stands in awe at the power and glory that you have. We also see that there's many things that you've created for us, the things that make our lives beautiful, the things that make our lives easier, and you've done that for us. Father, we also understand from the Scriptures that each man and woman have been placed before us as people who continue watch over us and do the things that need to be done by your word. Father, we ask that you bless them in the things that they do, that you watch over their families, keep them safe. We ask that you continue to use them to look into your word, to see the things there that you want done, the things that you need for your people. Father, we ask that you give them the things that they need in order to do your job the best that you can, and that you continue to watch over them. Father, we are so thankful for this opportunity that we have to see the things that go on in this government, and ask that you continue to watch over us and guide us in the things that we need to do as we go through this life. Bless them, Father, help them to do the righteous things that need to be done, bless these things and keep this thing.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I ask that Commissioner, Councilmember, Ms. White, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated.
I'd like to call Claudia Ortega up front, please. Claudia, how are you?
Excuse me, I need to...
Oh!
I'm sorry.
The wrong one, huh?
No, Claudia's right there. Good evening. My name is Al Mangiles, and I'm the event coordinator for Keep Odessa Beautiful, and of course, this is Claudia Ortega, which everybody knows, but nobody knows me yet. We're here to present an award for Halliburton. Halliburton has been and continues to be a great support to our community. For many years, Halliburton has participated in Keep Odessa Beautiful's communities-wide cleanups. Not only does Halliburton encourage their employees to participate in our community cleanup, but they also donate their time and money, maintains their adopted highway litter-free, and promote an eco-friendly environment by not using styrofoam in their facility. Just recently, Halliburton provided 100 litter receptacles for citizens to dispose of their litter properly during special events. Keep Odessa Beautiful wants to recognize Halliburton for their outstanding community service and for being part of the solution. To make our city a better place, we present them with a plaque of appreciation.
Please.
No, Claudia, Keep Odessa Beautiful, thank you very much. We're very happy to have been able to contribute, at least in small part, to the difference that Keep Odessa Beautiful is making, and that's what we strive for, right? Obviously, be a good member of the community and make a positive difference. So, thank you very much. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Hector. Also, Claudia, thank you for the program. You're right. Appreciate it much. May I have Rod Huber, please come up, please? Rodding the chief. I may read this proclamation. Emergical medical services is a vital public service in Texas, and whereas the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide the life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the emergency medical services personnel of the Odessa Fire Rescue are highly trained individuals who provide immediate emergency care to injured or ill persons, and whereas these emergency services are often split-second decisions that ultimately determine life or death situations, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS personnel also care for the community by teaching injury prevention to citizens to lessen the occurrence and severity of injuries, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers who save countless lives. Now therefore, I Dewey Bryant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Pro Tim of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, is Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Strong, Beyond the Call. Throughout the City of Odessa, I encourage citizens to recognize these outstanding men and women dedicated to pre-hospital and medical care for the citizens of our community. Please join me. If we could get Central Station, Station 5 up here real quick for a photo op, real quick. Let's give him one more round of applause. You know, it's great to be Mayor Pro Tim once in a while because you get to do some of these fun things, and this is a fun thing to me, and that is recognizing employees from the City of Odessa. And I think what's even more remarkable are these that were nominated by their co-hairs or their peers. You know, kudos. Kudos to those working amongst the group. I'm going to read a few of these three names, and as I read these three names, if you'll come up and join me as I read a little bit of your biography. Lynn El Abarra with Equipment Services. Leo started working for the City of Odessa in 1977. He has since been employed by the Equipment Services Department, starting his career as a mechanic, trainee, and working up to his current position of garage supervisor. Leo is a dedicated and highly productive employee that has a passion for going above and beyond in everything he does. His efforts are never-ending dedication and are obvious as he strives to satisfy every single department in the City of Odessa by keeping their equipment maintained, serviced, in good working order, and ready to go 365 days a year. Lionel was nominated by Eddie Molinar. Leo, congratulations. Pat Land started with Odessa Fire Rescue on November 27th, 1983. He quickly promoted up the ranks and now holds the rank of Battalion Chief. Chief Land is the definition of professionalism. He conducts himself with honor and dignity at all times. No one works harder to make improvements and to better the services that Odessa Fire Rescue has to offer. Chief Land oversees the daily operations for his shift. He has several projects, like the annual pump testing for all the fire trucks, and oversees the annual hose testing. Chief Land has been instrumental in the accountability and maintenance of all our mobile and portable radios. Another project he oversaw was the implementation of the new fire truck fleet. Chief Land is one of the most respected and knowledgeable leaders in the fire service, nominated by Saul Ortega. Thank you for your dedication. Marissa Rodriguez. Marissa started her career on the front line as a customer service representative on June 26th, 2006. Tested and strengthened by the fiery demands of providing a great customer experience, Marissa learned the direct impact that municipal government has on our citizens' lives. Since December 1st, 2010, Marissa has supervised the utility and ambulance billing for Odessa. This is a tedious and interminable job to which Marissa applies her experience and knowledge to create an ultra-successful atmosphere. We are blessed to have Marissa on the City of Odessa team. Marissa is accompanied by her husband Sean. Is he here? You're not accompanied, right? Marissa was nominated by Agapte for now. Agapi for now. Congratulations. I'd like to thank all those three nominees, as well as all the employees of the City of Odessa. Thank you for all you do. The consent agenda. Need to pull one, I believe? Have a motion?
Second.
You have a motion, a second, to pull H, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nades? Passes. Okay, the rest of the items are on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nades? Okay, we'd like to review and accept the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. David Dree with Weaver.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, City Council, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight for the September 30, 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Couple of things that we didn't mention in briefing was, the city's report goes to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, every year, gets a certificate of excellence every year. We believe this report is ready for that certificate program as well. Appreciate the time of the detailed review and then the time of the reviewing in briefing here today. We need to do the accolades and the thank yous to your staff, and Cindy Muntz, you know, does the heavy lifting on that. The team was a little lighter this year, and it still came to you on a timely basis, so we appreciate all the work that she does. I've got one of my partners, one of my partners with Weaver with me tonight, Greg Peterson, that helped with the presentation earlier. Just a couple of things besides appreciate the opportunity to be here would be that the audit report for September 30, 18 was an unmodified opinion, no findings, no issues, no deficiencies that need to be brought to your attention. Those numbers will go to the GFOA for certificate. And the other item that we talked a little bit about was the, we did a comparative six, and y'all saw some of those numbers, where we're looking at Odessa, Abilene, Amarillo, Lubbock, and Wichita Falls, and one of the numbers that I heard mentioned was the debt per capita, and how the debt per capita in Odessa is 957 per capita. The Lubbock and Abilene and Amarillo are significantly higher than that. So with that, our pending, we got legal approved today, we've got a representation letter. If y'all approve this tonight, there's a representation letter that we will have the city manager and Ms. Muntz sign. We'll be able to put today's date on it and get the report ready for final release in the morning, send it off to the GFOA, and start working on next year. If you have any questions, I'd certainly like to address them.
Questions, council? Not hearing any. Do we have a motion to accept the comprehensive?
So moved.
Second. Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Opposed, thank you, Mr. Dree. Greg, congratulations again. Thank you. Cindy, thank you for all your hard work. Okay, we need to consider a bid award to Brenley Lighting Company in the amount of $183,500. Mr. Patton.
That was on this.
Oh, it was? I'm sorry. Oh, that was, hell, not I. Sit back down, Mr. Patton. We don't need you, thank goodness. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of Nestor M. Cunanes, owner for original zoning of Light Industrial. Mr. Brenley.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. The city mailed out three notices related to this case. We did not receive a written protest or a written approval. The property involved in the request is located southwest of the intersection of Maurice Road and Southwest County Road. The site is currently designated future development. It is occupied by industrial development and related uses. Land use in the surrounding area consists of industrial development, related uses, and also vacant land. The applicant in this case is Nestor Cunanes. He is also the property owner, and the purpose of this original zoning request of Light Industrial would facilitate additional commercial and industrial use development on this site. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area, nor is this request contradictory to the land uses as stated in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The proposed original zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties, and this request is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood or the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give a unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval of original zoning of Light Industrial, and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Is this a public hearing? Are any questions from the audience? Hearing none. I'm taking a motion on the proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Any nades?
Thank you, Mr. Brenley.
We need to conduct a public hearing to consider the allocation of $835,073 in program year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds, CDBG, and $67,252 in unprogrammed CDBG funds. In addition, consider the allocation of $245,777 in 2019 Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. Sign the ball.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. Tonight, you have before you the request for the funding of the Community Development Block Grant Funds and the Home Investment Partnership Funds for the 2019 program year. As noted, the city will receive for 2019 CDBG funds in the amount of $835,073, and in home funds, $245,777. In addition, the city has $67,252 in unprogrammed funds that's available for allocation this evening. The funds that are available for allocation are, the projects are in your books that you were provided last week, and I want to please note the following caps are in effect for the upcoming year. For public service activities, a maximum of $125,236 can be allocated for those activities. For the CD administration, $166,750. For home administration, $24,577. In addition, under the home funds, a maximum, or a minimum of $36,867,000 must be allocated to a CHODO, even though the city currently does not have a CHODO that is eligible within the city limits. The Community Development Department is making the following requests. For program administration, $166,750. For housing rehab, $398,395. For demolition, $225,180. For the elderly and disabled on mowing program, $30,000. Under the home funds, we are asking for the administration amount of $24,577. We're asking for $134,333 for the housing infield program, and $50,000 for home buyer assistance, and also the $36,867 for the Community Housing Development Organization. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Could you further explain to the public the housing infield program?
That is where we take vacant lots throughout the community, and we build a house for purchase, so anybody who qualifies at 80% or less of area-meeted income, and they can qualify for a mortgage, can buy that, can purchase that house. In addition to that, then we come in and we provide the down payment, closing costs, assistance to help them get into the house.
And how do they qualify? Or how are they selected, or how do they qualify?
Anybody, they come into our office, they submit an application. We review the application to ensure that they meet the income guidelines. That's our basic requirement. As they meet the income guidelines, we also have to do, according to an underwriting criteria on the household, to make sure that they can afford the loan payment, the mortgage payment. Then they also have to qualify with a lender that works with our program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did I, I may have just missed it, but I only heard you talk about, under the public service requests, about the mowing, the Meals on Wheels.
Right. There are other activities that qualify under that cap, which is Meals on Wheels. It's the family promise. Those two both also qualify under the public service cap.
And you're recommending those, right?
I just presented the activities that our department, that my department undertakes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Dean, there are representatives from both of those organizations that will come up and make an independent presentation.
I just was afraid, I mean, we missed them. Thank you.
No, we didn't miss them.
We won't miss Margaret.
If you have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's start at the very beginning. Are we at the beginning?
Dewey, you might want to give Family Promise and Meals on Wheels an opportunity to come and talk about their programs.
Representative for Family Promise? She'll come up, please. Got three minutes, is that right? No movement of presentation? Introduce yourselves, please.
My name's Gilbert Sanchez, and I barely got started with the organization. I'm a retired teacher for Ector County. Been here 54 years teaching, so this is the first time for me, you know, to come up here to talk to you people, and I'm kind of nervous. It's always good to start out, I talk with a joke. The tie does not have anything to do with it, okay? I went to Washington, you know, and I bought the tie in Washington, and when I finished, came in, I was going to retire, I threw all my ties away except this one. So I'm stuck with this for this time around, okay? So I'm up here representing, or trying, I'll give you a little talk about the family promise, the program itself. The program itself is built around helping parents that are misplaced, or they don't have a place to stay, they're homeless families with children. That's one of the criteria that we actually check is, you know, what's their status within the community. You know, you could always say, "Yeah, I'm homeless," you know, but you got to look into them, and we got people that, you know, they do the interview with candidates. Now also, what we stress more in this family promise program is helping the children, which amounts to trying to get the children off the street, not the parents, because the parents cause the problem, actually, you know, if you think about it. What we're trying to do is save the child. The child has to learn that in order to survive in society, they need to learn how to manage the laws of society, how to maneuver asking, how to pay bills on time, how to manage their financial, you know, money that they have on hand, because there's always a tomorrow. You know, a lot of people, even us, we always get in trouble, because we'll say, "Mañana." You know, and sometimes mañana doesn't come with our own expectation, you know, maybe you might get laid off. You know what I mean? So we try to teach those students that, and also, we want to get the family, the adults, into various programs that this family promise runs. They have programs for financial literacy, which they need to learn, you know, if you want to live, you got to have a budget, you got to be able to save, you got to be able to repair their credit while they're working, because we here with the family promise...
Sir, your three minutes are up.
We'll give you a few more seconds to finish, if you would.
Boy, she's fast. Can I take my joke out?
We had to take the towels.
Take it all out, okay. No, but we have a 90, we have a 100% success rate. Sometimes we hit a 90, but we always manage to get a 100% rate of transition from the family promise program into society, which we also use various programs. So that means that we work with the community and other organizations to help build the program to be successful. So we also partner with Project Hope, Helping Hands of Midland, Odessa Lings, Jesus House, Well Hands of Grace, and Dora Hope Mission, in order to provide some of those programs to feed our, you know, our clientele. So...
Any questions for council?
Well, I'm already scared of the woman.
No more ringing, but any questions?
Okay, do you have any questions? I had Dr. Lada, who says she's our grand writer, not director, I'm thinking back, okay, but she's our grand writer, and she knows anything about the financial aspects of the program, okay? So if you got any questions...
You said, who is that again, sir? You, ma'am?
Susan Lada.
Susan Lada. Okay.
Any other questions for council? Thank you, sir, ma'am, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity you gave me. Maybe next time, I'll, hey, I'll polish up. Thank you.
You did fine. Thank you. Represent for Meals on Wheels.
You can always go to the chair.
Yes, ma'am. And always glad you are.
Good evening. Margaret Burton, Executive Director, Meals on Wheels, 1314 East Fifth. I want to thank you all very much for having us here, and I want to thank you for your past participation. Y'all have been very good to Meals on... Y'all have been very good to Meals on Wheels, but you know, there's still hunger out among the elderly and the handicapped. If you notice, we did ask for a little bit more this year. The hospital did raise their rate just a little bit. We paid $2.65 plus my packaging, which is 35 cents per meal. So that's $3, and we, what we're charging you, $3 per meal. So we do all the overhead and everything else, we depend upon volunteers to deliver this, which I would welcome any of y'all to come down and help us deliver it or visit my office anytime, because this is a community service that is dearly needed in this community. I have 29 people that are in their 90s, and one of your clients is 92 years old that receives funding from the City of Odessa. So, you know, it's a needed, and these people worked very hard in the past, very low income now, so now it's our time to feed and take care of them. Any questions or anything?
Questions from council?
I want to thank you very much and for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton, for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we can go back at the top.
I'm sorry, Dewey.
Oh, no, we can't.
We do have a representative from Odessa Affordable Housing here as well.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
It's usually Jill, that's why.
I looked for Jill, I couldn't see her, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Laura Martinez, I'm the rehab coordinator for Odessa Affordable Housing. We're here again this year to ask for funding for our program. Our program focuses on emergency rehab assistance for our elderly, disabled, and single parents that own their home and live within the city limits of Odessa. Every year, we try to help between six to 10 households, and usually, we do anywhere from handicap ramps to converting their current bathroom into handicap accessible bathrooms. We do windows, roofs, things like that. This past year, within this past year and this current cycle, we haven't been able to help as much as we can, just because of the overflow and everybody coming in for their roof, because of all the hail damage and everything. So we haven't helped as much as we wanted to, because they are bigger projects that we're doing now, but we would like to ask if we could do the $25,000 again this year for the next cycle, because we still have a great need for Odessa, and then, again, we had another hailstorm, and so I'm pretty sure, I'm already seeing applications, and I'm pretty sure for the next cycle, we're going to have a lot more. So thank you so much. If you have any questions?
So with the strong need, as you said, why just $25,000? Why not go for, you know, the gusto?
Just because the CDBG funding has lowered all the way across, and because the lack of contractors in our area, I mean, it's just a lot harder, and the requirements are a little stricter, and so that kind of, the requirements alone kind of weed out a lot of people. And not only that, but we have a lot of applicants in the county, and we're not able to service county.
Okay.
I am working on something else for the county, but with CDBG, we're not able to service county.
Okay, just the city, municipality?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go up to the top. One more time. Let's go ahead and start it by District, District Hamilton, District One, Representative Hamilton, would you give us your numbers for these allocations?
Well, I'm pretty much giving them what they asked for. I'm fine, I don't have any specific.
Go through and mark accordingly.
Yeah.
Thank you. District Two Representative, I will approve those amounts that have been requested. District Three?
I approve the amounts requested.
District Four, Representative Tom Sprouse.
I approve them as presented.
Should that be a consensus? Ms. Wilson, Ms. Dean, if you'd like to mention, if you may, y'all would like to least voice?
I would like to just voice that I'm in agreement and approve, and to thank the agencies and everyone for what they do for our community.
That's right, good point. Large member?
Those were my sentiments. I was going to say thank you for all you do, particularly for Family Promise, Meals on Wheels, and to the Odessa Housing Authority. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it. Sandoval, is there anything else we need to do for you, ma'am?
We'll need to do the home program, too.
Okay, consider the home program, home investment, let's go the same way. District One, Representative Hamilton.
Same thing. I'm good, I'm good with the numbers.
Great.
Across the board.
District Two, I will say the same, I'm fine with the numbers as presented.
District Three approves as presented.
Look at that copy, I know he's going to get fast and start.
Actually.
I also approve.
Okay, again, looks like we have a consensus, Ms. Wilson.
I do approve as well.
Ms. Dean?
I approve as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sandoval, for your hard work. Thank you. Okay, we need to consider the sale of city-owned property located.
Excuse me, if we could have a motion, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I thought it was consensus, why we need a motion? Take a motion.
So, second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandoval, you may come up now. Consider the sale of city-owned property located at 436 Ann, $45,000.
Yes, sir. This item before you is a request for approval for the sale of a property that's currently owned by the city, located at 436 Ann. The city exercised its option to foreclose on a special assessment lien that we had against the property, and we held a public auction for this, the sale of this house on June 4, 2018. There were no offers received. So the property stayed within the city's possession. On February 5 of 2019, we went out and requested formal bids for people to purchase this house again. Once again, we received no bids. In April, since we were not getting any response from anybody to purchase the house, we talked to some of the contractors that we work with, and some that have expressed interest in the house, and told them the house was still available. And at that time, we did receive one bid from Mr. J. Morales for $45,000. At this time, we're suggesting the approval of this request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes or passes?
Thank you.
Excuse me, appointment of boards.
I appoint James Wesley Anderson to the Planning and Zoning, District One.
Ms. Ronald, is there more?
Yes, and Cruz Castillo for the downtown Odessa, representing District Three, excuse me, District Four.
Okay, those being the only two that have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd also, Dewey, like to, we discussed tabling the Odessa, what was it, the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation? I'd like to remove that from the table.
Like to?
Remove it from the table? Can we vote?
It's on the table right now.
Yeah, I'm saying I'd like to remove.
Oh, it's on the agenda right now, you don't have to.
Okay, so we don't have to remove, okay, okay. Can we go ahead and make a motion for that, or?
It's up to council, here we go.
It's fine. I move that Malcolm Hamilton be appointed to the vacant position to represent the City Council on the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation.
Have a second?
A second.
Okay, y'all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Most are passes. Mr. Hamilton, excuse me, be on the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask for prayers and continue to pray for those that have been affected by the bad weather across the country. We had a lot of devastation, and please keep those families in your prayers. Motion to adjourn? Oh, excuse me.
There are no, I don't think we received any cards for non-such.
No, we did not.
Okay. Seeing none, then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn has happened. Thank y'all.
You're a good mayor.